United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While you're all looking at the flag, you notice our new flag poles.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Our new American flag and a new pole, but the new township flag is still under construction. So we got three out of four in place, so thank you.
Some shiny eagles on top and everything.
Thanks, Chris, that looks great.
It's a little classier than the last one. So anyway, I'm sorry, Anne, can we have a roll call, please?
L. McManus.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Castanelli.
Here.
Schmuckel.
Here.
J. McManus.
Here.
Lori Lapp is absent and is due.
She's in traffic and will be here as soon as she can get here, so.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly. All right, first item on our agenda tonight is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning of and at the end of each meeting. I'm not sure if we have any public hearings tonight, so if anybody has anything they'd like to say to the board, now's your first opportunity to do that. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you have to say. And seeing nobody running forward for the first public comment, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment and move on to review and approval of the agenda. This is an amended agenda, I believe, so any questions or comments on that?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Port.
Motion being supported to approve the amended agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business drag grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. For this evening, you have minutes July 22nd, 2025, regular meeting, recommend approval from the general fund, $95,072.47, and Gordy Frazier, developers escrow fund, storm roder reviews and determinations, utility plan review, oversight and closeout, $16,176.50. General utilities, $7,080. General, $3,370. Park fund, DNR trust fund, $30,815, for a total of $64,291. Recommend approval. Consideration of change order number one from Team Elmers for South Airport Road and Barlow Street Trail extensions, recommend approval. Consideration of contractor's application for payment number one from Team Elmers for South Airport Road and Barlow Street Trail extension, recommend approval. Consideration of South Airport Road and Barlow Street Trail extensions, closeout and turnover documents, recommend approval. Consideration of engineering contract for the pickleball courts at Silver Lake, recommend approval. Hardship referral ordinance for special assessments, Ordinance 79, introduction and scheduled public hearings for September 9th, 2025, recommend approval. Consideration of Ridgeview Court Road Construction Project Agreement with Grand Traverse County Road Commission, recommend approval. Consideration of Resolution 2025-21T, permanent restrictions for all non-essential and non-emergency commercial vehicles on Town Line Road, recommend approval. And consideration of Resolution 2025-22T, deficit reduction plan, recommend approval.
All right, quite a list. Is there anything, any item on the consent calendar that anybody on the board would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Is there any item staff would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda?
Yep.
Is there any item anybody in the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere? Hearing none, let entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
One second.
Motion being supported to adopt the consent calendar as presented. Anne, can we have a roll on that, please?
Castanelli.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
L. McManus.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
And J. McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is correspondence. I don't see anything. Reports, so we'll start with, I see Lauren, I would give her a chance to catch her breath, but we'll, county commissioners' report.
I left my house at 5:15.
Well, between our engineer and one of our board members, you all caught in traffic, so you were not alone tonight.
Lauren Flynn, county commissioner, District 2, happy to see you all. Few things from last meeting. We had Janie McNabb from Networks Northwest that I also sit on the board of. She did a great presentation about the programs at Networks Northwest as well as Michigan Works. One thing I really like to highlight is their apprenticeship program. This is where businesses in our community can come and work with their programs, their employees, and create programs for any career, any job, to create apprenticeships for young people or anyone getting back into the workforce. So I always want to mention that as that comes forward and this new school year is starting. Heard a very robust report from NAMI about the ARPA money and what it's doing to help expand mental health in our community and the legislative work they're doing down. They're speaking to our representatives and really trying to, we need the mental health beds, and I think we all know that, we need more mental health beds, both for youth and adults. The sheriff's office spoke to us about and how Grand Traverse Band have executed a cross-deputization agreement. This is following up the same agreements that they already have with Lidl, Benzi, and Antrim, so this will all protect more of our officers as well as the community at large. The facilities have been focusing on the needs of all the county buildings much more lately, so we approve that they are going to be doing a deeper evaluation of the soil and the foundation structural issues at the government center campus, so that's going to include the courthouses, the jail, and the governmental center. And finally, we reviewed resumes, required skills, and the experience and education requirements of applicants for the Health Department Medical Director. We did move three candidates forward, as long as that's approved by the DHHS board, so that should be coming down the pipeline. And then tomorrow, opioid task force is presenting again, and we're talking opioid dollars, so hopefully those get out in the community very soon. Any questions? You know how to reach me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Sheriff's Department report.
Good evening, Roy Raska, Sheriff's Office. Just going over the stats for the month of July, Garfield Township, 115 e-citations were written, 25 injury accidents occurred, 71 property damage accidents occurred, there was 11 OWI arrests, 67 criminal arrests were made, and then the 115 citations doesn't include some of the guys that are still writing paper tickets, unfortunately, but so it's probably closer to 130 citations for the month. And then, just like to add that the five community police officers with the township are all been together for several months now, and they all seem to be gelling pretty well together. Andrew and James Hunter have spent a lot of time on the bike, on the boardman loop, meeting with the city officers, and just spending time saying hello to people and keeping people moving along, and then they worked with NMC to clean up another spot that was behind the university center, along with the Parks, Garfield Township Parks guys. I had Deputy Core just kind of put some stats together. She's the school resource officer at West, and just from last September to June of this year, she handled 199 complaints, and those all included, she said, she took eight assault complaints, 28 assist complaints, four criminal sexual assault complaints, she handled seven referrals that come from the Department of Human Services. She worked with EMS on seven different incidences. She's handling lost and found complaints, she's written or investigated 10 MIP complaints at the school. While at the school, in or around the property, she handled three accidents. She worked with a runaway complaint, 24 suspicious-type complaints, threats and weapons, she handled three complaints, and then she works with the prosecutor's office with the truancy officer and that, so that takes up some of her time also, she handled five truancy complaints. That's just kind of a, in a nutshell, what she's been doing up there, and she's looking forward to starting her third year here in September. But like I said, everyone, all the community police officers seem to be working really well together and working with the Parks Department, and they seem to be spending more time here at the office now on getting things organized the way they like it, so it's been good.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions for Roy? Thanks, Roy. Nice job on all the response of our big incident we had over at Walmart, too, by the way. I mean, it sounds like Sheriff's Department did a great job, all the first responders, you know, so good job with that, appreciate it. Metro Fire.
Good evening, Chief Paul Mackin, Grand Traverse Metro Fire. The incident report that you have in your packets, we'll start with page one, it's the Garfield Metro Enfers incidents for July of 2025. We had a fairly busy month, leading to incident types as normal. We led with medical assists, emergency medical calls, 257 incidents within the township, and under that category, 361 in Metro as a whole, as you kind of work through, you know, most, again, emergency medical services other at 45, motor vehicle incidents, 14 within the township as opposed to 22 within Metro. Alarm system activations that were unintentional, accidental, et cetera, 11 and 16 between Garfield and Metro as a whole. Obviously, a long list of incident types, but the totals for Garfield Township were 449, and total for Metro Fire was 653 for the month. Turning to Garfield Metro EMS incidents in July, again, continue to lead with falls, 89 within the township, 126 total within Metro. I may have mentioned at previous meetings, our public educator is kind of trying to reach out to different areas, trying to get more fall education out there. We've had real good luck with getting them into the nursing facilities, et cetera, but you know, she's attempting some new programs. I had mentioned the balanced bingo and some other things, trying to target those people that are living at home, that might not be, you know, they're not going to hear about the things that are happening within the facility, so trying to target them as far as an audience to get the information there, because those statistics are still pretty high. She's going to be doing a little bit better getting the word out within facilities, so she's tailoring that delivery and working pretty diligently to see if she can get that information out there. Other incidents, cardiac-related issues, chest pain, et cetera, difficulty breathing, again, pretty high categories, general weakness and other medical problems. But if you look at the totals under EMS complaint, we had 385 within Garfield Township and 536 within Metro as a whole. Turning to the pie chart or the graph page, the July incidents by station, again, of that, 653, we had 172 or 26% at Station 12, and 178 incidents at Station 11, all totaling those two, about 53% of our calls coming from within the township there at 11 and 12. And then a breakdown by township, all in Garfield because some of the other stations cover Garfield Township as well, we're looking at 69% for the township at 449, and you can see the other townships are coming in after that. At the bottom, we have that responses versus incidents, total incidents for the month, again, 653, but a total of 802 responses. That would be those incidents where multiple stations are responding to handle those incidents. So that completes the incident report. Other happenings within Metro, just briefly, we're working to continue to establish a broad budget, which we'll be talking about here shortly. We are conducting interviews for the plans examiner position. We did, the application period closed, we did do a review, so we have four people we're going to be interviewing next Monday, so we're optimistic. We had a range of experiences there, so we're optimistic that we should produce a pretty strong candidate out of that. Also, our ISO evaluation, which I had mentioned, we have that meeting this Friday, so this week, kind of prepping and getting those final data and information together for that. We are participating in full-scale exercise at the airport on August 20th, and then we're also conducting some planning meetings for the ICeman event in November. I would like to just briefly touch on the incident on July 26th at the Walmart. Our personnel responded to that incident with our partner emergency services and law enforcement agencies. You're all pretty familiar with that, there's a lot of media coverage on it. The incident after the incident, well, at that incident, obviously, you know, 11 patients were treated and transported from that scene, and that happened within 30 minutes, which is pretty amazing. The efforts of our personnel, couldn't be prouder of our personnel, couldn't be prouder of all the EMS agencies, East Bay EMS, MMR EMS, Grand Traverse County Sheriff's, Michigan State Police, Traverse City Police, and all the fire agencies that assisted. All those agencies came together, worked collectively to really, truly save lives, because many of those people were critical. And, you know, to have that many people have that happen, get transported from that scene, go to the hospital, and come out, you know, obviously rehabilitating, but, you know, we're extremely fortunate. We feel that there was, you know, following the incident, we attended several after actions and meetings, and, you know, we looked at a lot of the circumstances. There were a lot of, aside from all the personnel coming together and doing their job, from every little aspect, from citizens intervening and confining that hostile threat before law enforcement even arrived, make their job easier in terms of doing that, and all the efforts of the law enforcement response that got unseen, once they realized that a lot of that stuff was taken care of. Obviously, they had a lot of other law enforcement concerns, but I have to give accolades to them for all the assistance they did in applying tourniquets and taking care of people and assisting with patient care, all of that coming together. A better-planned incident probably couldn't have had a better result, to have that many people taken care of, treated, transported, treated unseen, transported, and ultimately survived, and I can't not, I can't go without acknowledging, you know, the hospital staff and their efforts. After the incident, again, we went to a number of different after actions, and there were a lot of positives, however, with that, every agency that responded all agreed, you know, we need to continue to strive to prepare and be better, because for a same, or to get a same or similar outcome out of an incident where maybe the circumstances weren't as favorable. And in regards to this incident, there were a lot of things that really worked out for everyone involved, especially, most importantly, the people that, you know, were victims of that attack. The factors were, you know, just the fact that at that given moment, there wasn't a single ambulance committed, which is not common. You're all familiar with months in healthcare and how busy the ER has been. At that moment, you know, it was kind of like a little bit of a pause in that surge that they've been seeing, the availability of law enforcement in the area. 911, at that very moment, they didn't have calls, they didn't, it was just a brief pause. Now, at that moment, then, they started getting, EMS units were actually returning from other previous units and close by in proximity to the area, and just having all the staffing and everything available, a lot of things kind of aligned for us, and we're favorable. So all the people involved recognize that, you know, it went very well, but we have to prepare ourselves for unfavorable conditions, you know, so that in the event that we have this, we can hopefully get a positive result. So, again, accolades to law enforcement agencies that responded and all the personnel that's responded there. Again, I couldn't be prouder of our personnel, they performed extremely well, dealt with a lot, and, again, something that, you know, we feel good about in terms of the response, but it's not something that we're going to take lightly, we're going to continue to strive to improve, so. With that, that completes my report. Be happy to take any questions.
Questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great job. Planning Department report for August.
Good evening, John Syke, Planning Director. Our report is in your packet, I just want to highlight a few things. The Hytops nightclub application, which is at the former Yonkers department store there at the Cherryland Center, that continues to be tabled. The applicant has conducted a, had a sound engineer conduct an acoustical impact study for their proposed nightclub operation there. That is now in our hands, and the applicant also provided an escrow so that we can have that study verified by our own sound engineer of our choosing, and then that report will be then presented back to the Planning Commission at this juncture. So they're still going through the process of evaluating that development application. Tomorrow evening will be the regular Planning Commission meeting, we have the proposed redevelopment of the former Macy's store there at Grand Traverse Mall. We anticipate that the Planning Commission will, they'll be at least considering approval of that site plan for that redevelopment of the store. It does not include, they had talked about a fast food restaurant as an outlot, that has not, that will not be part of this application, that will have to be done under a separate application. And then also, just want to point out, the Planning Commission, its study session is looking at the southwest corner of Town Line Road and South Airport Road, and just kind of at this point, just evaluating whether to alter some of the future land uses in that area. That would require a formal amendment to the master plan should they go forward with that. They also studied, we presented the Planning Commission with a draft neighborhood mixed-use district, so it's a new mixed-use neighborhood district that we're looking at to add to the zoning ordinance. We're also looking potentially at some other districts, and so that right now is under study by the Planning Commission. So those are the highlights that I have.
Any questions for John? Lot of things going on.
Yeah. All right.
Thanks, John. Parks and Rec, Chris, just in the packet.
In writing.
Okay, all right. Treasurers report.
So my quarterly treasures report, I just had a couple things to note at the bottom, and I did want to make some corrections, it's not a big deal, but there was 500 transferred from the general to the managed account to purchase bonds for investment, but then the two under there, the 2 million and the 1 million, it was actually transferred to Michigan Class, not the managed account, so this is a little typo there, but. And then on the second page, the blue highlighted investments are the new investments in our managed accounts. Any questions or anything for me?
All right, thank you. All right, Clerk's report.
I've also submitted my Clerk's report in writing, are there any questions?
Nope. Thank you. Township manager report.
Okay, I received a phone call from a lady named Sarah Walters Johnson who works on 31 South by Chick-fil-A and the new Home Two Suites Hotel that's opened up recently, just expressing some concerns with traffic congestion, her ability to get in and out of her place of employment because of all the cars stacking up in the turn lane and just overall the extensive traffic. Also reported a bunch of crashes in that area. I don't have any data to support that, but that's what she reported. I explained to her that, you know, every project, you know, that gets approved or gets reviewed usually has a traffic impact study, especially with Chick-fil-A and the hotel, so that was all done, and that's all considered during the approval process, so just made her aware of that. Also, we are working with the businesses and the mall for the connector between Lowe's and the mall, which should alleviate some of the issues, but not all that she's concerned with, with the congestion. Also, MDOT in conversation with them in the past, talked about turning 31 South into a boulevard, potentially starting South Airport all the way to 14th Street, but maybe even going south to Chums Corner someday. But you're talking a five, 10-year project, that they potentially will start doing studies in a year. So that would really change the safety aspect of that road and really alleviate the issues that she's reporting. So I told her I would just make you aware of her call, and I think she's content with the information I gave her. So, yeah, we'll just, you know, and we're busy in the summer, you know, we have tourists here, it's just the nature of our area, so. Some traffic issues, you know, additional ones, East Silver Lake Road, received a call from former trustee and resident Steve Duhl about East Silver Lake Road, kind of in the boat launch area, Highland Drive, it's very hilly, for all of us have traveled there. You know, he wondered about the board supporting a speed study for a potential reduction in the speed of that road. So I reached out to Lieutenant Raska about doing a sheriff department data collection effort, so that way this board can be informed as to what the speeds are, like we've done in the past, and you can make a decision whether you want to ask for a speed study, which at this stage is done in the form of a resolution. So that will be, you know, several week process, you get speeds going both ways, and then I'll come back to you in the future, along with Mr. Duhl to do, you know, to talk about his concerns, and you can decide if you want to go that route. Also, you got to think about the new Myers that's coming into that area, so you're just probably going to get more traffic than you do today, so it may not be a bad thing to consider. Also, there, for the Beta project on the franyear, the PUD approval required them to put in a crossing by Ridge 45, and Beta had some concerns about putting that crosswalk in there, and then if people were to use it and get hurt or, God forbid, get killed, then that would be liability and risk to them. So they've engaged our planning director, myself, and the Ridge 45, I believe it was the engineer was on a meeting, to talk about that. Well, they're, you know, they're required to do that, there was an engineering study done that supported that being done, Beta was at the table, so was Ridge 45. So everybody was in agreement about doing this. The interim Beta Director, Chris Davis, at that meeting asked if the board would approve a speed study and reduce the speed on the franyear to 45, which would help reduce the issues of maybe people getting hurt if they were to put a crosswalk there. Well, they will eventually have to, but it will help their concerns. So I will, she'll be coming to a future meeting and presenting her concerns to the board, again, with a resolution to approve her first study. So that'll be potentially in two weeks. So those are some traffic-related issues. Silver Lake Improvement Association, they, we've had a contract with the consultant who has been supposed to go out for bid on the lake treatment, and they really haven't been, so the association wants to hold them accountable and make them go out for bids. So it's out for bid right now, the deadline, I believe, is August 20th, and soon as those come back, the consultant will then determine what the annual cost will be, and then we'll start the special assessment process going forward, to be wrapped up by the end of October. So that's kind of new, since I've reported anything about the Millf Well was the fact that they're going out for RFP. Also, new on my to-do list was a ordinance that was approved in the past by a former board to put no wake buoys up on the lake by the boat launch, and just looking out for the risk to the township, I'm trying to determine how that should be handled, whether it's an agreement between us and the Silver Lake Association, and just have them responsible, because right now it's all kind of word of mouth.
We, I think if you look through the minutes, we allowed them to put those up.
Right.
And then there was a concern on to who was responsible for them, and they wanted to give them to us, but we don't want to be responsible getting them in and out of the water, we don't have, we don't have a boat to do that. So it was who was going to put them there, who was going to take care of them, who was responsible for them, and they were supposed to be people that applied for it, not Garfield Township.
So I'm just trying to create a formal process to say, okay, we approved that ordinance, but you, whether it's the Silver Lake Association, you are but you, whether it's the Silver Lake Association, you are responsible for doing all these things. You're going to take them down at the end of the year, going to be putting them up, you're going to be maintaining them. And I know from my former job is the Sheriff Department actually installed them on some East Bay lakes, and I don't know that they do that anymore.
They do not.
Yeah, and so they got out of that business, and the sheriff is not wanting to do that for the Silver Lake residents. So I just thought I'd check these, all these avenues out, and then come up with some sort of an agreement. So that's kind of in the works.
Does the DNR have any input or anything?
They, we all went through the process, and they approved it.
Okay, so the DNR was involved in the process of basically allowing them to put them in.
But it was the question of who was going to take care of them, who was going to put them in and take them out.
The Silver Lake Improvement Association did not want to take.
That responsibility.
But they're the ones that requested to put them in.
No, just the residents right in that cove.
Oh, right in that cove, okay. Because I wasn't here when that took place. I was just curious how that discussion went. Okay.
Remember it well.
Yes.
Jumping onto the Walmart incident, I think the chief summarized it very well. It was a tremendous response by everybody in a very high-stress situation. You know, looking at what the township role was in that, I was in contact with the undersheriff and also emergency manager that weekend, just to say, you know, we're here for a resource for you, what can we do? They both ensured me that things were being handled appropriately, and that if they needed to get our help, they would get with me. I also updated the supervisor just to kind of keep him in the loop. One thing that we're doing now is kind of supporting the recovery, and, and that's in the effort of providing a space for the prosecutor's office and the Department of Justice Office for Victims of Crimes Unit. They will be on the 25th at 6:00 PM hosting a victim forum, where basically there'll be a session for victims to share their needs and expectations regarding the recovery, learn how to recognize signs of trauma, distress, depression, and other concerns. And the PAO may provide an update, a case update at that same session. And then on the next day, the 26th, the day of our board meeting, they're going to do a morning session, an afternoon session, psychological first aid training for first responders, and also mental health therapists on the afternoon session, to teach them how to respond to victims of, of mass violence. So we're kind of supporting the community in that way, and then whatever we can also do with the sheriff and emergency manager down the road. So. And I believe...
Yeah, Molly, a question for Chris?
Yeah, back to the Silver Lake stuff. Is there anybody, when I lived down the lake, the Sheriff's Department used to come through there and kind of watch things that was going on. Does the Sheriff's Department have somebody who goes to the lakes now? Who's, who's got the jurisdiction there? A lot of, you know, I talked to a lot of people on the lake, and they're concerned particularly about a particular boat that goes down loud and headed, you know, 70 miles an hour down the lake, takes them two minutes, and then turns around, comes back, and does the same thing. And you've got wake, you know, people out there on their paddle boards and all kinds of stuff. So who deals with the safety on the lake? Is there anybody who does that?
The Sheriff's Department has a marine division, and they solely patrol inland lakes and the bays. So I think the ideal thing is to identify the boat, get a good description, and if there's a specific day or time of the week that this happens, then they can be out there when that happens. So, I mean, that would be the, my suggestion, as we could communicate it to the lieutenant, and he can...
The marine division spent a lot of time over the last summer, and a lot of tickets, and it was just visible on Silver, April 5th, September.
So we're like...
My kid worked in the marine division last year. He spent a lot of time on Silver. Does that seem to be more dangerous, because it's so narrow, and the speeds, the amount of people that are on it?
There are...
I don't know about this year, but that McManus oversees the marine division.
Talked to him about, and I, I have just told him to call Sheriff's Department. I don't really do it, but. Also, there are some rules about wakeboarding because of the erosion of the shoreline there. Is that a Sheriff's Department issue? I, I think there are rules about how far south of the island you can wakeboard and...
So I did talk to the Silver Lake Association about that. There was a real effort, like a year or so ago, to have an ordinance created to prohibit that, but they had a lot of pushback, so they chose to not go forward with it. And I don't know of any other water controls regarding wakeboarding boats that exist for the Sheriff's Department to enforce. I kind of figured that out in my buoy research.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, and I just have two other quick little things. Angel Care Childcare Center applied for a 2% grant, their second one. They were awarded a $7,000 one that they got first of the year, and they just got awarded a $10,000 one. And this is just to improve the daycare center to meet current codes. So that's, that's great news. And then I reported in the past the Heritage Estates Ravenhurst sewer backup. We held a meeting with all the residents here a week or so ago. The DPW informed all the residents as to their investigation. They determined that, you know, short of a, a piece of equipment televising or going through our system to see if there was an issue with it, they believe that a sewer riser at the high school was damaged prior to the storm we had, and all of the rainwater went into our sewer system and was able to handle it effectively, and the only way out is all the, the basement drains in the two subdivisions. So at this point, the contractor, their insurance company's doing an investigation, and our DPW director is getting direction from the DPW board on how far they go. If the DPW board decides that, you know, they've done enough, we really haven't proven who did it, you know, with evidence, it may come back to the township responsible for that. So that will be determined at a future DPW meeting. It could come back to the township for us to do it if the DPW board tells the director to do no more. So.
What will the township be responsible for?
Just helping with the investigation.
Okay.
Yep. And then the sewer, I sent all the board a PSA on the sewer issue on Cass and South Airport. That was a piece of conduit that apparently was directional drilled into the area of our sewer line, causing damage to it, which over time created a sinkhole. And we spent, you know, that occurred last Thursday. Over the weekend, we had to wait for a company that was going to do an investigation, try to determine who the owner of that conduit was, and that was completed today, and we're not able to determine who the owner was. So now we're working with our engineer in Elmer's to, to fix the sewer line correctly and hopefully get the road back in order. It also may be involved cutting the fiber optic line, because you can't reroute the sewer, because it has to obviously flow correctly. It's not like you put 45 or FlexVipe on it. So it's in such an area where it's going to have to most likely be cut, and, and then the sewer repaired. And obviously, that will create an impact to somebody.
Was the driller putting in a fiber optic line?
Say that again?
Was the driller putting in a fiber optic line in that conduit?
So it, it appears to be a fiber optic line based on the color of the conduit, and Elmer's, to my knowledge, has not opened up the conduit to determine what's exactly in it. The company today was able, part of their investigation, which I don't know the answer, to determine if it was live or not. Our engineer could probably add more to that, and maybe we could ask her later if you have more questions, or find a time.
Lots of questions.
I know nobody's come, nobody's come clean on owning it, but I guarantee if you cut it in about 10 minutes, you'll know who it is.
I would guess, yes.
So I got a pair of bolt cutters in my truck.
I like it.
But there doesn't seem to be any permits pulled for that same boring. So it was probably an illegal boring, so nobody really wants to fess up to doing it.
Oh, of course not.
So we'll figure it out.
And the traffic is wonderful now because of it.
Yeah, well, that's, and that's, a lot of people don't understand what they're doing there. Well, it's because that sewer main was ruptured, and there's a sinkhole, so wasn't a lot of choice. So.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Chris, thank you. Any questions for Chris?
I do have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
This letter that you got.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely. I was just going to ask you about that.
So that, thank you. I apologize for that. That gentleman just sent me that letter to make me aware of the parking lot at Charleyland Center, and he, you know, he feels it's unsafe. So we have all this great development going on there, but let's pay attention to how the public has to get there to use it. And so I wanted you to be aware of that, because, you know, we have members of the Planning Commission who make decisions on development. Let's also focus on parking lots and structures like that. Our Planning Commission, our zoning department, will be dealing with, like, maintenance of parking lot rules and ordinances, and start enforcing that to alleviate those issues.
Yeah, it's terrible. I was there the other day, and there was, like, potholes all over the place. It's really, really bad.
Yeah, and also, you know, with some new developments going on in that particular area where it's the worst, I mean, that could impact that development, because the developer may be asked to fix that before things move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. I just have, just a couple of things on the supervisor report. We had a meeting, and Roy was there, with the, Chris and I, with the township TCAPs, county road commission, county, two of our county commissioners were there, looking for opportunities on Frankie Road for pedestrian access, for that subdivision there, Meyer, the Montessori School, you know, not specifically tied to TCAPs. It's kind of a bigger issue than that. So we may be including some, some suggestions in the capital improvement plan to, to improve pedestrian access in that location. And, you know, it, right now, Frankie's so rough, the speeds aren't real high there, but when it's going to get rebuilt next year, that, even though that's a 35 mile an hour road, the expectation is the speeds may increase there. So good discussion with a lot of, a lot of different entities around that. BPW, I don't know if it was at the last meeting or not, we mentioned we did get down to nine members from 11, but the bylaws haven't been changed yet. So because of a couple absences, we still don't have a quorum for this week. So BPW's been canceled for Thursday at this point in time. So some, some goofy stuff still going on with BPW there, but we're working our way through that. We did have the, you know, the commons water agreements coming up. We'll talk about that. We got the first phase of that completed, and we need to approve that tonight. And then that's pretty much it. Other than that, we'll talk about the rest of the items later. So, all right, any questions?
I have one for you.
Mm-hmm.
Who, who is the body that changes the bylaws for the BPW so that you can have nine?
The county voted to change from 11 to nine, and we, at the BPW finance meeting last week, we scrubbed the bylaws and made all the changes at our level, what would need to be changed to bring us compliant. Then it has to be approved at the BPW meeting, recommended, kind of like a recommending board. The county commission has to be the one that changes those bylaws.
Thanks.
But we weren't, you know, weren't able to have our meeting this week now, because we, we actually, we only have seven, of the nine members, we only have seven currently in place. The city manager resigned, so, and that hasn't been filled yet, because it requires a, requires the, the recommending board, the city commission to do a resolution to the county, and then the county to appoint them. And then the rural is still in question and open. You know, we know there's going to be a rural rep, but there's been some question about what is a rural rep, and we've, we've got legal opinion. We think we've got progress made on that issue, but we still don't have that person approved. So it's a nine-member board with seven current members, and with two members not able to be there this week, left us at five, but our bylaws still say six is a quorum. So.
Starting to sound like government action.
It's immensely frustrating, believe me. So we're just, it's, it's, you know, two steps forward and one step back, or one step forward and two steps back, it seems like to BPW right now. But we're, we're still focused on the, on the end game, and we're working that way. So, but thank you. Any other questions? Hearing done, we'll move on to, nothing on our unfinished business, new business, consideration of Resolution 2025-18-T to approve Grand Traverse Metro Emergency Services Authority 2026 Budget Proposal. Chief, or Kim, I'm not sure which one, or both, yeah?
Good evening again. I have with me Kim McCant, our accountant for the authority. In your packet, you should have the 2026 proposed budget within there, and I believe if you turn from the title page of that, the second, next page will just list our mission, vision, values, et cetera. I'm going to ask you if you can turn to the next page where we listed priorities for the budget. So like many organizations, when we sit down and prepare the budget, we, we looked at what are our priorities, what are essentially our goals, any challenges that we want to try to address within the budget as we're preparing it. And, you know, some of these are similar as they have in the past, but we, we looked at it. Obviously, you know, we always want to maintain our, our staff. It is a, all professions are a high demand in regards to skilled workers. So everybody seems to be competing for the same employees in those skilled worker candidate pools. So, you know, our goal is always to, to ensure that we retain our talent and our experience within it. 2026 happens to be a contract year for our firefighters local, so that's something that we knew that we'd be addressing this fall, and it would be an impact within the 2026 budget. So we took a look at that, took in consideration forecasting some, some things, and Kim will touch on a few of those things when she lists expenditures. But we feel like we've done our best to kind of address that within this contract and address that priority. Next is our part-time staffing levels, so that we provide maximum benefit while maintaining success. The way we view part-time firefighters, it's supplemental staffing. There's a lot of value, a lot of enhancement to part-time staffing. That way you can supplement your full-time workforce and, at a, at a reasonable cost and provide some impact. So again, we wanted to ensure that we were budgeting that. We did make some revisions to the part-time program, and we feel like we're getting some consistent staffing, so we wanted to continue to do that. Without keeping in perspective is, there's limits to how big you can have a part-time program. If you want that consistent staffing, and you, you try to build it too big, with the ebbs and flows and the nature of turnaround of part-time employees, you're not going to be able to maintain that consistency. And our goal is consistently to increase staffing for day-to-day operations. So that was a goal as well. We, again, looking at our, our overall staffing model, looking at the growing needs of the community, increasing calls for service. We've been talking for years about increasing full-time staffing and how to address that. We've been seeking grant funding for that. We continue to do that. We're waiting to hear on a safer grant application. Hopefully, we'll know something, best-case scenario this fall, if not first quarter next year. Regardless of that, we wanted to get to a point where we could, we could sustain and maintain some additional full-time staffing effectively. So that's something that, after evaluation, we felt that we are comfortable doing within this budget. However, we did plan that for six months into the year, beginning July 1st, where we'd increase that full-time staffing. So that's something that was built into this budget as well. We want to continue to fund the replacement schedule of our fire apparatus, essential frontline equipment. We, we looked at our fleet, we did some fleet reduction. We looked at, at ways that we can fund and prepare a apparatus replacement schedule that's sustainable, that we can fund through our operating budget, and then with some additional funds from surplus staff sales or surplus apparatus sales. So we, we've had some success to this point. We feel comfortable with that program. We want to continue to fund that. So, for example, we do have the, within this budget year, we have the new ladder truck that was ordered. That'll be delivered in the beginning, in the middle of, mid-part of 2026. And then again, our next purchase in terms of planning for apparatus would be ordering an engine this year that would be delivered in 2028. We continue to, to seek that target of a 40, 60, of 40% down and 60% financing. So again, we wanted to continue to support that. We also wanted to make sure that we fund all our small, medium expenditures for facility needs. So we're looking at that. We didn't do an overall assessment of our, our facilities. So we identified some of the small to medium things. That's continued maintenance, roof maintenance, et cetera, replacing of doors and windows, parking lot, you know, doing some repairs, some patches, roof replacement in some areas, and then looking towards some of the larger expenditures of, of when you need an entire roof or a, in a complete parking lot restructuring, and, or, and then also potentially any additions and any future stations. So there's more work to be done on that. That's something that we're going to continue to work on. But we started to address some of those small to medium expenditures within our capital plan. We also wanted to continue to plan for replacement of aging equipment, you know, essential equipment, for, you know, for example, SCBA. That's something that... we'll continue to seek grant funding for, but to replace our SCBA, it's approximately about a half a million dollars to buy new SCBA. We're at the point where we feel like the age of our SCBA should qualify for grants. We're going to continue to apply for that, but we also have to figure out ways to start setting money aside and, and putting that away for that. So that's something that we're incorporating there as well. And then again, continue to be fiscally responsible, be accountable to our, to our townships, our stakeholders, you know, being transparent. That's still a goal. This budget again is at the same millage rate that it's been last year and the previous year. No change in the millage rate there. We've been fortunate to have increases in value that would provide some additional revenue. So those were our priorities coming into it. I'm going to turn it over to Kim. She will overview the, the revenues and the expenditures in both the general fund and our public improvement fund. And let's all turn now to Kim. All right, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I will start on the page that's titled net taxable value allocation. And in the middle of that page is an orange box which kind of, which details what the budgeted revenue that would be contributed by each township that Metro supports. And you'll see that Garfield's contribution to the 2026 budget for Metro would be $3,687,883. And as Chief alluded to, that's at the 2.75 mils times the, down in the bottom, the taxable value for 2025. So that's how that's calculated. Onto the budgeted revenue and expenditure report, you can see that those, those three revenue amounts feed into, in, over in the fourth column under draft budget feed directly in there for each township. We do also have some smaller revenue items that we budget for each year, but those don't have a really huge impact, but we do budget for them as well. Down under, in the expenditures, under personnel services, as Chief mentioned as well, we've included a conservative estimate for increase in wages and salaries. But what that is actually going to be is dependent on our contract negotiations with the union coming this fall. And we've also included a conservative expected increase for health, health insurance and other benefits. And then also the three additional firefighters that we, we have budgeted for just to begin in July 2026 is Chief mentioned, and that will be dependent on whether or not we get the safer grant. So, so that, there is, there is a reasonable increase in personnel services, and that's what makes it up. As far as the rest of the expenses, the supplies, the contract services, repair and maintenance and other services and charges, those are, have, those remain reasonably consistent with our previous years. We internally have broken out some accounts into different ledger numbers to make it a little bit more manageable on, on our internal purposes to be more descriptive where we're spending our money. We've also incorporated a lot more input than we have in the past from our suppression staff who are responsible for some of these areas. On the next page, under capital outlay, this primarily consists of specifically identified billing improvement and equipment purchases. As you can see in the notes on the side, we've kind of identified some of the larger items. And, and then there's also some smaller equipment needs that are included in that. Below that, the debt service, this is a payment that we had to reflect separately for our audit purposes. It has to do with our cloud services that we receive. The contingency fund and the emergency contingency fund remain in there. Those are our small amounts each year that we just put in there. And then the, the transfer out of the 875 is a transfer of money from, monies from our general fund to our public improvement fund to cover our debt and capital purchases, which I'll be discussing shortly. So our net, net addition to fund balance for our fiscal '26 draft budget is about 35 grand. So this is, this is a break even budget for us this year. On the next page, which is the public improvement fund, on the fourth, the third, fourth column over there, under the draft budget, you'll see for the revenues, we do show a portion of the debt proceeds, and that's related to the purchase of the ladder truck. And that's, as Chief mentioned, we are in a 40, 60 split. So that would be 60% of the costs of the ladder truck we are planning on financing. And the 875 that I just talked about, the, the transfer in to make up the total revenues in the public improvement fund. Under capital outlay, under building improvements, there's, we have scheduled, as you'll see in the notes, parking lot repair. And then under the vehicle acquisition, that's the 1.2 millions, the remaining portion that we owe on the ladder truck. We did make a $350,000 down payment this year out of our budget to cover a portion of what the cash we'll have to pay out. There will be $35,000 of additional equipment that we have to purchase for the ladder truck when we receive it, and then also a $75,000 purchase of a captain's vehicle. The debt service and, and all of our capital, our future capital purchases are detailed out in much more detail in the further back in the, the packet, but I'm not going to go through that in detail. Now, the debt service represents the amount of debt payments we are estimating based, based on our current debt and what, what finance we will obtain for our ladder truck. And those also are detailed in much more detail further back in our packets. So, and then we have a small contingency. So overall, we end up with a $15,000 reduction in the fund balance for the PIF fund with a total increase between the two funds of 20 grand. So it's, it's a break even budget. And we, you know, feel like we are trying to manage the purchase of, minus the, the amount that we're going to loan out, we're trying to manage the purchase of the, the ladder truck through our, our regular budget. So are there any questions at this point on any of the information?
I have a question.
Okay.
It seems like if you're adding personnel, that six whatever percent increase in your wages doesn't seem like enough. So I just wonder if it ends up being more and you don't know what your contract negotiations are going to bring you, where, where would you cut otherwise?
Well, we, I mean, we do, we, there, I mean, we would have to look at some other line items within that. I mean, it is, I did detail out like what the cost would be of those, those additional fire, the additional people. And, and, you know, obviously, they won't be coming, probably coming in at the highest salary level.
Sure, sure, sure.
Right. They would be more of a starting level. So.
To be inter-level firefighters.
Right.
They'd be at the lower end of that.
Okay, all right. It seems like a low percentage if you're, yeah.
Percentage of the whole.
Right, I know, right.
And they're only in that budget for six months, too.
Ah.
The three budget, they're not expected to come out until midway through the year. So it's really, it's three people for a half a year.
Right.
Okay.
We did run the budget where they were in there for the entire year.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
We felt, I mean, we, we felt we could have done that. And that was one of the, the tests. And when we had discussions with our, with our board members of the finance committee, we looked at and said, it's something we could do, but it's going to make some of these other priorities a little bit tighter in terms of some of these capital, one-time expenditures. And then also, there are a number of little factors. We wanted to wait and see what happened with the grant funding. We also thought that that time of year is a little bit better time to prepare an onboard. And, and then also, it, the addition of those positions would be an operational change because we're looking to put the captain, the captain into a full-time 24-hour shift commander's position. Such a change in roles for them. So we felt there were many benefits to putting it off to the middle of the year. It also gives us a little bit of time. We're also going to know where next year's increases are at.
Right.
Prior to, prior to our board actually pulling the trigger, so to speak, on hiring those three people, we're going to have an idea where that. We also have 27's budget in draft form, which makes us feel a little bit more comfortable being able to look at. Because again, when, when you hire full-time people, you're hiring them for a long time. So that was one of the benefits of us putting that off till July. It really gave us a lot of leeway, you know, just to be sure. Even though we ran the numbers, we felt comfortable with them. We feel with, with a commitment such as that, I don't want to be like, yeah, I think we can do it, you know, in which we, we know we can do it. We, we wanted to be, be able to demonstrate 100% that we can do it. It's the right move and it's not going to impact us in other places.
Any other questions?
Yep.
All right. In the budget process, I was very smooth. I know I've commented before, nice job preparing. It was my first budget process with Metro, but it went very smooth. And all, all the members of the board stated the process was, was very good this year. So I appreciate that. In your packet, I believe on page 116, I think, is a draft resolution to, for this. It's also on the.
Is that this one?
Yeah.
Basic motion that we adopt resolution 2025-18-T, the budget for the Grand Travers Metro Authority.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and maiden supporter to approve resolution 2025-18-T, which is to approve the Metro Emergency Service Authority 2026 budget proposal. Any further discussion on that motion? And we have a roll call on that, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
Justinelli.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
L. McManus.
Yes.
Cumber.
Yes.
J. McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, I had this put on. It's going to seem like a bad penny, probably to Denise that it's coming back, but.
Oh, I'm being.
I'm just saying, that's, this is, if you remember, in December, my very first meeting, chairing the board, we, we, we addressed this and we did not approve this, this budget resolution for Metro. So it, I, it's been coming up in conversation. So I asked for more detail on, on the process. And, and I really kind of take responsibility probably for not investigating it more and understanding it more. I could have probably done a better job of explaining and presenting it to the board when it came to us in December, but I was, you know, jumped in with both feet. It was my first meeting. So I want to kind of walk you through what, what happened with this and, and would like us to reconsider this resolution. So it, this was the resolution to, to co-fund the dorms over at East Bay. And East Bay's paying for half of them, and then Metro is going to pay for the other half. And the timeline.
If we pass the resolution.
What's that?
If we pass the resolution.
If we, well, if we pass the resolution. However, it was in, it's, it's, it's a, it was in the budget. You know, the, the money was in the budget, and it was the budget the Metro Board approved. And it was in the budget that this board approved, too. But because they chose to spread the expenditure over three years, it required a resolution. If they'd done it all in one year, just put the whole 90,000 in one year's budget, and everybody approved it, it'd been over and done. There would have never been the need for the resolution. So, and I didn't, I don't think it really, I even understood it. This is not an additional assessment of more money to the township. This is already in the budget that's already been approved. The money's already there. And it's not, it's not a resolution coming back and asking for more money from the township to build the dorms. It's in, it was built into the budget for 2025 and beyond. And it was also approved by the Metro Board and then approved by our board, but we didn't, this board didn't see the resolution. And then when we voted on a resolution, it was like, well, it was already been done and they should have come and asked first and all that conversation around that. So I don't think the presentation was necessarily as clear as it could have been. And I, I wasn't, I was coming in and not really understanding it as well. So I think the points that it's, you know, there is no more, it's not an assessment of more money. It's already in the budget. It was approved by the Metro Board with both Chris and Chuck approving that. But when Hyder saw the spreading it out over three years, Hyder said it should go to a resolution. Okay. But again, it's already still in the budget. So the other thing that we didn't see, and it was a big key point that we asked the chief, you know, do you see the need? Do you see anything on the horizon that shows that we'll be using those dorms? And probably in December, we didn't see that. We didn't have that vision, didn't see the need. But as we work through this budget and we're adding personnel, and we see the increase in calls, eight's kind of on an island out in Acme, and, and nine is a support for eight when one's spending a lot of time with 11 and 12. And so if, I'd like the board to reconsider this proposal. In the big scheme of things, it's not, it's not, you know, a huge amount of money. And in the big scheme of the Metro budget, and again, it's already in the budget. If we reconsider, if we choose not to approve it, then that's fine. But it'll have to start over. It'll have to go back. But the other townships has already approved it. And so, and it's already in the 2025 budget. The money's already there for this year. So if we were to reconsider it, and then we would just catch up and, and pay out the three years and get done. If we don't approve it, then it has to go back to all three townships and be reconsidered or pulled out. So just a little more information. I don't, Chief, I don't know if I did it, did it justice or not, or whatever. So.
Sure, yeah.
I'll let you comment anymore on that.
Yeah, no, it was, yeah, we're here because it was, was decided at the June 24th Metro Board meeting. It was voted by all, all board members to bring this back. So that's, that's why we're here. That's why I'm here. Supervisor McManus was 100% correct. Looking, I guess, when I looked at this in terms of, okay, you know, I stood here last, I believe it was last November.
It was November on the resolution. It was a December meeting.
Um, you know, and some things have changed. You know, some of the answers are, some answers are very similar. Some answers are a little bit different in terms of the questions that were asked me by this board. And I could recap what I, what I feel is, has been different from then to now, or I'd be, I'd be willing to answer questions if there's specific questions.
This, this project's already been completed, right? The work's been.
It has been completed.
How many times can, yeah, how many times can someone come back with this? This is the third time.
This is the first time, the second time on this one, this particular resolution.
Not as if we can't be the contractor who did the work.
No, I believe it was.
No, I.
It's all done.
Well, I think the, the idea years ago came up of doing it. That's been a long time. Well, this particular one was, when, when we, a year ago, right now, when the Metro went through the budget process, July and August, it was, it was approved as part of the process. But when legal looked at it, said, okay, you're spreading this particular investment over three years. We need it in a resolution form. But it didn't come to this board until December.
So the reason we need that resolution was several years before that, the two smaller townships would make decisions that would save them money and cost Garfield money.
Right.
Okay.
They would change the leases to relieve themselves of expenses that they hadn't paid for years. And then when they realized they owed $50,000, they voted to forgive the debt.
Mm-hmm.
And it wasn't, it was just a small amount in terms of the budget, but they were really delighted in doing it. So that's why we have the requirement now.
The need for the resolution. Okay.
And.
But this particular resolution was only voted on once in December. That's the only time it came to this board was in December. It should have probably come earlier, but with all the other things going on and elections and everything, it just didn't end up on the agenda. Soon as Chris got it placed and I got it, we put it on the agenda and then it went down.
So I will probably vote no on this just because my impression is that it was never the initiative of the chief. It was never the initiative of the department. This was a East Bay Township project to do dorm rooms for their ambulance. And this was requested by the supervisor. I was at the Metro meeting of East Bay, who specifically requested this come back up. It wasn't the chief who's asking our board to approve this again. It's not Metro. It's East Bay Township would really like us to revisit this, even though our, our board voted no. And so because of that, I'm going to vote no on it because I believe it's not something that Metro brought forward as a project that they needed to do. And also, we already voted no on it. The reason it came before our board was for us to make a decision on if we wanted to pay for this particular project, and we voted no. So I'm. We're gonna vote no on it.
And I understand what you're saying. I, I feel differently when it, when it was, it was already in the budget. It was, it was in the budget that this board approved too. The line item was in this, the budget that this board approved. We approved the budget, we just didn't approve the resolution.
We need to approve the resolution.
Yeah, it's, so, it's, but the, the budget came to us in August, like it is now, but the resolution didn't come to us until December. So, it just didn't happen as timely as it should've. So, in my opinion, I think the township made a commitment to it by approving the budget.
I, with the past that we've gone through with this, I don't agree with you, okay? Because of the fact, and I was even, when I was an alternate for one of the Metro Board meetings, was even cornered by the supervisor and said, "Your board needs to do this." I said, "No, we don't need to do that. We already voted no." "Well, I want it brought back again because you don't understand." And when I'm put in that position, I don't appreciate it. But again, like I said, and like Chloe said, Metro wasn't asking for it. East Bay was. And that was my problem and I just, I, I, I will vote no on this.
So, Joe, I know you said it once. But could you please repeat, if we vote no, what happens?
Actually, I'll probably defer out to Chief.
I believe if you vote no, then, you know, it, it is what it is. There is one dorm at Station 9 that is allocated to Metro Fire's personnel. We have one person there, one firefighter. Not an ideal situation, not a situation that I like. It's a situation that was there when I arrived at Metro. There's the additional, there's three, there'd be then three dorms there. Two are being utilized by East Bay personnel. There's one vacant one, but East Bay will have paid for that. If you vote no and it stays what it is, it stays what it is. If we increase staffing at some point in time, we're gonna have to address it because we would have to get permission from East Bay to utilize that dorm.
And the original contract said East Bay was responsible for all capital improvements.
Right.
But they changed that over our objection.
But we had to change, we changed the, the thing. It's not that way now.
Yeah, they're, I think they're, they're all consistent, the least that we have with your facilities.
Yeah, we know. We know. We were part of that.
Yeah, yeah.
One tie spits all.
Yeah.
And it, and it doesn't.
It doesn't.
And it doesn't, but that's just how it is. There, there was a reason when they formed Metro that they were all different.
Okay.
They weren't ever followed by the previous administration, which is whatever it is. Now they are, now the leases are all the same. If the board approved it and it was in the budget, we should probably adhere to it.
Or we could just change leases back.
Well, that would take a board action by all three boards.
Oh, that's right.
I mean, all that will not happen.
To be, just to be transparent, and I think that I owe this board this explanation. I just would like to just explain because when I came to Metro, this kinda was already happening, unfolding. When I stood before you, there were some direct and pointed questions, which I anticipated and expected, about what are you gonna do with it? And my answer to you was, at this point in time, I'm not putting anyone there. I can't give you that answer because I want to look at call volume, et cetera, other plans. So, where we were then is, at the time we were, we're operating, we were planning for the upcoming 2025 budget, the budget we're working on. I had no, no additional staffing within that budget. That was number one. Number two, I had identified that we needed to retool our part-time firefighter program, to utilize it so we can have consistent additional staffing. That's something we've retooled. That's something that's been going on very well. To be forthright, that additional part-time position, we created a backstep firefighter position that we're staffing 24 hours a day. That firefighter is at Station 11 here in Garfield Township. And that was driven by the fact of, of call volume. That's our busiest station. It was so that way operationally, we could have a three-member crew responding for structure fires immediately with all, you know, within Metro, specifically in our high, highly populated areas. So, we can be a little bit more effective with our operations. And that was the intent. So, that's been successful. That's something that we intend to continue to do. We also were, I also knew that at the time, you said if you, maybe it was asked here or other places, if you hire three more people, do you want to put them there? My answer was no. And because I knew that the better, the need for Metro was those additional firefighters needed to be at Station 1 because we were using part-time on occasion. We were using overtime on occasion to be able to have a shift commander halftime. My thought was, with the call volume, the demands of the shift commander, there's a lot of operational, you know, benefits and, and standards in terms of having 24-hour incident command. I wanted to put that additional full-time position at Station 1, move the captain to a car, make them a 24-hour shift command so that our operations are safer, more accountability, all those benefits. That's what I, I had in my mind, but obviously, we weren't at that point about talking about full-time staffing. Now we are, and that's the intention. The additionally, this year within our budget, because we've had some successes, there's ebbs and flows with the part-time. We're still building that. We started getting to the point where as we bring some on, we lose some, we bring them on. We have, we're trying to maintain a certain level, so we have some additional part-timers. So, we opened up two days a week, the highest call volume days. On Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we opened up halftime shifts, 12-hour shifts at Station 8. We chose Station 8 because there's a lieutenant there and a firefighter there, similar to Station 11. So, similarity in deployment models. On a few days, we have three over there, just on a few. Next year's budget, we did budget so that we could do that. If, if we have the staffing, Station 11 will be a priority because we want consistency in the supplemental staffing. That's adding, you know, one additional person a day through the part-time is, we want to maintain that. Secondary, we would boost, bolster the staffing at Station 8. And it'd be a similar model because there's lieutenant, a firefighter, driver and a backstep firefighter. That is planned within the 2026 budget. So, that's where, that's where we went from. From then, it was no additional staffing to now, it's, it's additional 24-hour a day at Station 1. In mid-year, additional 24-hour staffing at Station 1, which puts the captain in a car, which, which services all of Metro, Garfield and Acme, as well as East Bay. Then, the potential for halftime additional staffing at Station 8. So, it's one, two, three positions that I had some vision that would be priorities before we address Station 9. Next, on the horizon, logically for me, I'm not guaranteeing or anything, would be potentially Station 9 because I have a situation there where I have one firefighter operating alone, which is something, it's not, not the best scenario. It's not the safest scenario, but again, we're addressing that with our personnel, ensuring that this is what you need to do. Here's, here's your operating guidelines. We don't want to put you in harm's way. But we do utilize that person. They're bringing the ladder truck at times. They're bringing tankers into other areas of the district to support Station 8, Station 1. As Station 1 moves into Garfield, sometimes they may move over to Station 1 to bolster staffing there. So, there's a lot of operational impacts. I can't certainly tell you for sure where we're gonna go in the future, but there is a more likely a plan that at some point, we're gonna put additional, you know, staffing there. It would be a logical sequence. So, that, that's where we are from, from then to now. So...
So, we build it and then they came.
Well, that was, yeah, that, that, I didn't, that wasn't a project, that was a project that had happened prior to I came. My focus was, what's the best way to staff to service Metro Fire? In terms of call volume, response, et cetera, and bolstering that. That, that is my primary goal and that's why, before addressing Station 9, because you see the reports, that's the lowest call volume, was to address it, where, address that additional staffing where we need it first. And then also, with some of those operational changes, we are, we are looking at move up some Station 9 and potentially in the future, moving into backup Station 1. We also do have the new ladder truck coming and with ISO and other considerations, we do want to operate that as a ladder company and respond to our taller buildings and hotel, hotel buildings, et cetera, so that we're having the appropriate response to those buildings. So, there's still a lot of dynamics to, to where we're going, but that's kinda where we are now. So, I, I just wanted you to understand that, at, when I stood before you before and couldn't tell you, it's because we didn't have it budgeted. I couldn't promise you. And also, I was still learning the Metro budget, learning our income, working with Kim to, to kind of alter it so that we could make the best use of that money so we can, you know, bolster these services.
Molly has a question, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay. So, is it your intention in the next couple of years to station two people at Station 9 24/7?
I would like to at some point in the future. I can't give you a definitive, but I would like to for a couple of reasons. Number one, I don't like the, not happy with it. I know the Firefighters Union is not happy with it. I know it's gonna be a subject in contract negotiations. I know it, there's, there's legislation in the state. There's a Senate Bill 319 making, you know, making staffing, minimum staffing standards mandatory subject to bargaining. If that were to happen, I was familiar with that in Illinois. It's still bargaining. Still gotta come to the table, but obviously, that's a consideration. So, you know, there's a lot of other things. And again, with some operational changes, operating a new ladder truck, other things like that, at some point in time. All of these stations come together and shift. As there's calls, heavy call volume in Garfield, East Bay, or Station 1 moves over, other stations move over, et cetera. Putting the players on the field, so to speak, helps us as a whole. So, at some point in the future, ideally, I would like to get an additional firefighter there 24 hours a day.
Two of these dorm rooms that are there, there are three, correct?
There's, there's total of four there now.
There's four there now.
One is Metro, three are, at this point in time, three are East Bay's.
Okay.
Because of the new ones.
So, there's four there.
There's four there.
And East Bay is using three of them?
They have two people there. The other one is, I assume it's essentially, it's vacant at this point.
I understand they have two for ambulance and then the other two were designed for Metro. But one's just not getting used because Metro didn't...
But I don't, but I, at the time though, I don't have anyone to put there at the moment. So, again, that kinda tied back to our situation where we were.
Yeah.
I just have to say, if East Bay wants a person out there, whether we pay for this or not, they need to provide them a room because Garfield provides rooms for all the people at their stations. Is that correct?
There is, yes. There's rooms at, at, yeah, both stations, there's, there's rooms. And I believe, and I don't know, actually Supervisor Corn would probably be the best person to answer is during the renov, the last renovation at Station 11, there were dorm rooms added for fire and EMS crews. Is that correct?
I think just for fire, the EMS are working with the same units.
We're already there? Okay, all right.
And we paid for them.
And we paid for that.
Yeah.
And Garfield paid for them?
Yep.
Garfield or Metro?
It was when it was originally built.
Garfield paid.
Garfield. But on the renovation, did Garfield or Metro pay for them?
For the firefighter, that would've been Metro.
Metro. So, Metro paid to renovate the fire, the fire station at Station 1?
Right.
The new dorms. So, is this pretty much similar to what's happening at East Bay?
It's a little different. East Bay and, both 8 and 9 were found by the fire marshal to be non-compliant for people to sleep in.
I remember that.
So, they had to change some things. And that's when the question of...
Who pays for them?
Who pays for them? Cause under the lease contract, it would've been the township's responsibility.
Right. That was...
They decided to slip that.
That passed us, but are these new dorms that were added on that to pay for? Are these the same ones we've talked about for years?
These are additional after that.
Additional.
There were two, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, this situation happened once before for the first two dorms that were added there. This is the second time. There is one thing that I do feel obligated to share, is that we do, Station 8, you're familiar with Station 8. Our firefighters are sleeping in, in a trailer outside the building. That's their dorm room. That's been a scenario for at least the last decade or more.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are we still paying rent on that?
We are.
Why didn't we purchase it? Cause we would've paid for it.
I, I will, I will, hopefully my, if you'll allow me a moment to continue. So, so it was discussed when, when East, or when Acme Township moved into their new town hall, they had expressed interest of turning over the rest of the building, cause we share that building, to Metro. So, we had discussed it. We had added some, looked at it. Could we renovate that space and create dorms? So that we can then stop paying rent on the trailer and move them in. That was put in this year's budget. There was money allocated to that project. That's something they, they did move out our next board meeting. They did it, when I say they, Acme Township approved a new lease because their lease was the same as the other ones. The only difference was we split the utilities because they had offices there and they paid for part of the utilities. We paid for the other half for the station. The new lease will, will allow us to have all that space. We would be responsible for the utilities like we are at our stations. Our plan is to renovate that. Our next board meeting, we're gonna overview that. We have it in the budget to do it. We have a plan. We did consult with an architect. That's something that, gonna seek formal, final approval from our board in order for us to do that. And, you know, renovate, create two dorm spaces and then stop paying rent on that trailer.
Which is wrong by now.
Yeah, right.
And that's, that's a new...
And, and I agree. That's, that's been a long goal. So, we are, we are in that process with Station 8. So, we will be renovating, well, the intent is, is to renovate that and make use of that space.
Yeah, Molly.
Yeah, so I, I guess, this is my opinion. The way that East Bay Township came into this process on these dorms is, is not the way that I think that it should've been done. So, I'm not very happy about that. But if you believe that you are going to use two of the four units that are in 9, I, I can go along with the resolution and help pay for them, half of it. It's coming out of Metro and...
And half of it comes from Garfield.
And half of it comes from Garfield?
Mm-hmm. Well, East Bay's paying half.
49% of the budget.
Half of the 30,000 comes out of the Garfield Township budget. So, $15,000 a year for three years.
49% of the budget is paid by Garfield.
Right, of the Metro budget.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, if East Bay's paying half...
East Bay's paying, is paying half and then paying some more out of the Metro budget.
I mean, I don't wanna get into the weeds on that part of it. But if Metro needs it and Metro is saying that there are four dorms there, East Bay Township is paying for half and Metro's paying for half and Metro's gonna use half and East Bay's gonna use half. I mean, I don't like the way it was done, but let's move on and get it done.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, right now, there's four.
There is.
Two are being used for the ambulance.
Correct.
One is vacant and the other one's vacant.
The other one is you being utilized. We have a single full-time person there.
Metro's using one.
Yes, we're using one.
So, if you have a halftime person there, there's no guarantee that that dorm's gonna be used on either.
Right, if I do halftime, but...
And that's what your potential is, is do halftime?
The potential for the future, no, the halftime is, is going to be this next year in, in Acme. Because, and the reason we're choosing there is there's a lieutenant there.
Not East Bay.
Not, not East Bay, cause there's a single firefighter there. There's not a lieutenant and a firefighter.
So...
So, there, so there's...
We won't need one next year.
I don't need one next year.
No. It wouldn't, that's...
This would be over, period over a couple of years of us, you know, evaluating the budget, looking at it, looking at operations. But again, it would be, it would be with those other staffing moves or changes, it would be a goal.
So, it may be needed in the next couple of years. It may.
Yes, yes.
Not a definite. It may be needed.
I, I will say may. I will say it's a goal. I will say that it's a situation we have to address.
It's not, it's not, it's not in worry.
Yeah, I can't say definitively and I won't say definitively because, you know, call volume and all those other things dictate.
I understand that.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Is this same resolution up for a vote in Acme Township as well?
It's already been...
Acme and East Bay already approved it.
Okay.
They approved it about a year ago right now.
Okay.
Okay.
It used to work.
Clearly, East Bay approved it.
It used to work for them.
Yeah.
We can't change the past.
Alright. Well, I think all the explaining anybody wanted to do has been explained. So, we have a resolution in your packet, Resolution 2025-20-T. So, what's your...
So, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2025-20-T.
I'll second it.
Motion being supported to approve Resolution 2025-20-T, the payments to, for the dorms in East Bay Township through the metro budget. Any further discussion on that motion? And could we have a roll on it, please?
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Was that L. McManus?
Yes.
Okay. Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
No.
Corn?
No.
Smuckle?
No.
And Jay McManus?
Yes.
Okay, four to three.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Next item, public hearing, consideration of Lake Point PUD major amendment, Oak Hollow multifamily. So, John, thank you.
Good evening. You have a report in your packet for this major amendment to the Lake Point planned unit development, and it's proposing to amend the PUD, which was in an area, it's on Oak Hollow, which is kind of behind the Value City Furniture Store. It was originally supposed to be some office buildings, two office buildings, and in place of that, they're proposing two multifamily residential buildings. And so, this is for your consideration this evening, follow the public hearing. Doug Mansfield's here to represent the applicant. Should he have any questions or presentation, so...
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and open up the public comments, see if anybody has any questions at that point. So, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing on consideration of the Lake Point PUD major amendment. Anybody who would like to come forward and speak to this, now would be your time to do it.
I didn't appreciate it.
Just please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Erin McCall, Lake Point Village Apartments. Do you need the actual address number?
That's fine.
Okay. So, I just mostly have a question of what the impact will be to the natural area there along the Boardman Trail, and the fact that there's a lot of wildlife activity, and what the impact will be to that. I'm curious to learn, if possible. This is my first time, so I don't know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Now, John, are you here for this one? Yeah, okay. Go ahead, and if you want to come up and if you have any way you can address that, those questions, that question?
Doug Mansfield, Mansfield Land Use Consultants, 8:30 Cottage View Drive, Suite 201, Traverse City, Michigan, representing the developer. One of the things that you have to understand on this is, the property is part of a much larger planned unit development that was approved in 191889. One could go in and build commercial buildings, which are actually of similar size and form as we're proposing, okay, without basically any subjective review or any dynamic make you throughout. But, being a person who enjoys the woods and woodlot, yes, there's a surprising number of beaver on the site, doing surprising amount of damage to the forest along there, to trees that are significantly bigger than normal. So, I guess that's the only food they've got. And there, beyond that, we've got deer, different rodents, a couple of larger bird nests, but nothing significantly endangered along that corridor. We are preserving, there is a, if you have been on the site and you know the site, it's a bowl, and it comes down on a plateau that is about eight feet above the river. And that's actually the river there. So, we're containing our development on just that bowl and not going up the ridges at all, except for a sidewalk that was requested. And then to remove, actually, we're doing, we're allowing TART to move their trail off the sensitive boardland, or wetlands, that they're on right now, and moving them on the uplands. So, this is a good thing. So, all in all, I would say I don't see it being involved in this type of thing for a long time. I don't see anything endangered. I don't see anything that, because we're not allowed to go along the shoreline. There's actually a preservation zone, and so, we're not allowed to touch that. And that's primarily where I see the most wildlife activity taking place. So, I don't see an impact.
Alright. But we still have the, the public hearing is still open. Does anybody else have any questions or anything they'd like to ask? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I believe, John, what's our, do you want to walk us through the next steps here, please?
Would you like a motion to approve the findings of fact?
Is that what you're looking for?
Correct. There's two suggested motions there, one for the findings of fact, and should you pass that, then the approval for consideration below that.
Page 132, yeah. And the Planning Commission's already approved this, then?
Correct. This has gone through, had three meetings at the Planning Commission. They had a, the initial public hearing, and then made a positive recommendation. They approved the findings of fact, which they are providing for you for consideration first. And then, obviously, you've held a subsequent public hearing. And then, there's also the consideration of the actual approval after the findings of fact.
Thanks, John.
I would like to make a motion that the findings of fact for application, PUD 1987-02-M, submitted by SPPEC Holdings LLC, for a major amendment to the Lake Point planned unit development to construct two buildings with 24 multifamily dwelling units at parcel number 0521200200 in support of the requested amendment to the Lake Point planned unit development, and is recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission, be adopted.
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the findings of fact for PUD 1987-02-M. As read, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. There's a second one.
Do we need a roll call on that for the motion?
Is it?
For findings of fact?
Oh, probably not for the findings. Okay.
Yeah. It's not a resolution.
No.
No resolution. Just the findings of fact, approving it.
I make a motion that application, PUD 1987-02-M, submitted by SPPEC Holding and LLC for a major amendment to the Lake Point planned unit development to construct two buildings within 24 multifamily dwellings, unit in parcel 05-212-002-00 be approved, subject to the conditions listed.
Support.
Most made and supported to approve the, to approve the PUD 1987-02-M with the conditions 1 through 6 as listed in the report. Any further discussion on this?
Do we need to cite the Planning Department Report 2025-78 as part of that motion?
Sure. Denise, you all right with that?
With addition 1 through 6 as indicated by Planning Department Report 2025-78.
Right. Okay, Molly, you with that, then?
Thanks.
Alright, any further discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Pretty much.
Alright, item D, consideration of Life Story Crematorium, conditional rezoning, Resolution 2025-19-T, page 161 in your packet.
So, this is an item that actually we're trying to correct an error that was done. This was a project that was actually approved by the Township Board for conditional rezoning back in April of 2022. And there was, conditional rezonings are a little bit different than anything else that we do in terms of documents. Typically, like for instance, the PUD, that was just amendment that was approved, the applicant will have to record a report and decision order. In the case of the conditional rezoning, there's a statement of conditions that needs to be recorded. That was, the applicant provided that as a signed document, but the actual statement of conditions was never recorded with the Register of Deeds. So, because there is a time limit on those that they have to be approved within, that has since expired. So, we're, staff is recommending that, this is to kind of correct that, that the Township Board reaffirm that conditional rezoning agreement with an updated resolution. And basically, what this project was, is the Life Story Funeral Home on Hammond Road made a request to add, in addition to their funeral home operations, a crematorium, which was approved to allow that, in that restricted conditional rezoning. They have not, even though it was approved, they have not made application for a land use permit for the crematorium. So, it's not, has not been established. But the conditional rezoning documentation should still be recorded with the Register of Deeds. So, that's what's being provided here to you this evening. There's a recommended action, which is essentially reaffirming the statement of, approval of the statement of conditions. And then, there is, in this case, a resolution that would also have to be adopted as well.
Any questions for John on this one? Page 167 in your packet are the two recommended actions.
Sure, I'll make a motion that application Z 2022-01, submitted by LMS Properties LLC, Life Story Funeral Home, to conditionally rezone parcel number 05024019302IG General Mixed-Use Business District, subject to the applicant's proposed statement of conditions, which was originally approved as Amendment Number 32 to Garfield Township Ordinance Number 68, based on the adopted findings of fact, and for the reasons set forth in Planning Commission and Planning Department Report 2022-59 be approved, subject to the applicant recording the statement of conditions with the Grand Traverse County Register of Deeds.
Most made and supported, application Z 2022-01, as submitted, be approved. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, then, the second motion here, motion that Resolution 2025-19-T for adopting Amendment Number 32 to Garfield Township Ordinance Number 68, originally adopted by Resolution 2022-12-T, conditionally rezoning parcel number 05024019302IG General Mixed-Use Business District, subject to the applicant's proposed statement of conditions, be adopted, subject to the applicant's recording the statement of conditions with the Grand Traverse County Register of Deeds.
Motion made and supported to adopt Resolution 2025-19-T, with the conditions as read. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Ann, can we have a roll on that, please?
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Smuckle?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, thank you. Alright, item E, discussion of the capital improvement CIP program. John's doing this one, too. Busy tonight, John.
Yes. So, this should be the last one. This is the capital improvement program. This is capital, draft capital improvement plan. Back in March, the board established a committee to prepare the plan. It is, they spent the last couple of months preparing that. They have sent it to get feedback and input from the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning Commission. And actually, the Planning Commission has its, on its agenda tomorrow evening to provide a formal review and recommendation. At this point this evening, this is just being presented to you for an introduction. There's no action requested at this time. It just would allow the Township Board to study it and provide any thoughts. One of the things you can do going forward is to adopt it, adopt it with some changes, or refer it back to the committee.
Alright. Any questions for John or anybody on the committee?
Does this get reviewed annually?
Sorry?
Does this get reviewed annually?
Yeah. It will be, the committee will prepare it on an annual basis.
Every year. Okay.
And this, yeah, and this is just a guide for the budgeting process.
Okay. This isn't a three-year plan, and we're stuck with this three-year plan?
Yeah. The only, it just know that how it's laid out, those additional years, only the budget year is the one that pretty much is the one that, it's like the formal recommendation. The things that are listed out beyond that are really just kind of giving you the heads up what to expect. That could change next year depending on the conditions. But yes, it'll be updated and presented to you on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't think it was a very good plan beyond one year.
But this is really the first formal one we put together.
Right, correct, yeah.
So, it's the first one, but yeah, the intention is to review it annually, so, update it. Kind of like a master plan. It's just a guide. It's changing and ever revolving, so. Thanks, John. Okay, item F, consideration of Garfield Township Munson Booster Station lease to the city of Traverse City. Chris wants to say this, or I actually can as well. But we've been working with the city on the supplying water to the Commons area. And so, originally, we approached and had this one lease where the lease and then the determination of the, whether the actual pressure district come to Garfield or be reimbursed with cost sharing, was going to be one document. But we, just for time purposes, we split them. So, this is the lease of the building to the city, which allows them to commence with construction right away and get the water mains in. And then, over the next, we have till roughly October, November timeframe to hash out the details on the actual pressure district or cost sharing, whichever we choose to go to as far as reimbursements for that. So, this is just, really gives them access to the building for construction purposes.
Correct.
So, city approved this at Monday's meeting, and this needs to be in place in order for the brownfield to commence with construction.
The language in the agreement assumes that at some point, Garfield will take over the...
And that's been the intent all along. Because if they, if they want to keep the district in there, the amount of money they'll need to pay us back is probably going to be substantial, I'm guessing. So, we're working on that right now. Jennifer's been running numbers on that. So, we have, and we're, September 3 is our first meeting with the city to sit down and start negotiating and figuring that piece of it out.
Very good.
So, I have a question. We're not turning the water on until that final agreement's in place.
Yeah, and that's actually in this agreement, that the water doesn't flow until that other agreement's in place. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the Garfield Township Munson Booster Station lease with the city of Traverse City.
I support it.
Most made and supported to approve the Garfield Township Munson Booster Station lease agreement with the city of Traverse City. Any further discussion on that motion? That's, Chris, that's really authorizing me to sign that lease.
Correct, yep.
Correct, okay. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Next one's very similar, but this is a little, a little different, with the consideration of easement agreement between the city, between Garfield Township and Munson Medical Center. So...
So, this one, I believe, was handed out to you, and emailed to you earlier, but not originally last week. And this is something that we were able to work out last minute with Munson. And whoever makes the motion, I do have a recommended motion language that I'd like you to use, per our attorney.
Do you have that in your hand?
The, basically, we, basically, what we, what this amounted to, hold on, I'll just Basically, we, basically what we, what this amount of two, hold on, I just got to explain this a little bit and not to over explain it, but in the process of doing the leases for this, we, there was no lease in place from Munson for us to have our booster station on Munson property. So we had to establish that lease before we could lease it to the city to move forward with the Commons project. So this is just a, we're just accepting from them a easement, or a lease agreement, so, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a motion to accept the grant of the easement by Munson to the township for the booster pump station property located at 5067 Red Drive, and authorize the supervisor to sign accept such easement on behalf of the township.
Support.
Most mean and supported to accept the easement from Munson Medical Center for the booster station. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, Consideration of Purchasing Office Equipment for the Township Office.
Hi, this is pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, I sent a letter to you in your packet.
Yeah. I'd just like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of Conica Minolta Biz Hub C301 Little I Copy Machine from Kraft Business for $6,587.56 and Canon TZ3200Z36 Large Format Printer Scanner from Traverse Repro for $14,111, $110, sorry.
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the purchase of the office equipment as recommended by Denise in the motion. Sounds like, from what we've talked about, there's the repair bills and things are about, it's about as cheap as probably to move forward some new stuff, so, thanks for putting that together.
There is another motion that needs to be made to dispose of the two items.
I was going to do that after this one was...
Okay, I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
So motion made and supported to purchase some equipment. All right. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Ann, can we have a roll on that, please?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Al McManus.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the disposal of the Conica Minolta C3351 Copy Machine and Canon IPF785 Large Format Printer Scanner.
Support.
Motion made and supported to dispose of the two pieces of office equipment. Will those be just sold or...
I will put them on publicservice.com to see if somebody will buy them. And then also regarding the plotter, there's a potential rebate that we would have to trade the old plotter in to get that. So I want to see which one we get the most money from, either selling it or trading it in.
All right.
So that's to be determined, because that amount, I guess, changes daily.
All right. That was good. Do I need a roll on disposing or just, okay. Okay, all, motion made and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Consideration of appointing Keith Fritz to the Construction Board of Appeals. We got an opening on that board, we've asked for a few different people and, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, Dave Crest had served on that board and he just recently resigned, so we needed to find another member to meet statute. And we located, well, I know Keith Fritz personally from my time with the county, he's a city fire marshal. And we wanted a fire service person to be on their supper from Metro, so Keith was willing to step into that role as long as the board approves it.
I would make a motion to approve the hiring of Keith Fritz.
With support.
Most mean and supported to appoint Keith Fritz to the Construction Board of Appeals. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item J, Consideration of Hiring Briann Lindsay for Deputy Assessor Position. There's a handout in your packet. So who's handling this one? Chris or Lori or who?
I'll pick it. Go ahead. So the board approved, you remember at our last meeting, to go out to try to find somebody for the deputy assessor position and set the salary range at 70,000 to 90,000. So we created a job posting and Ms. Lindsay applied. We interviewed her last week, the personnel committee, and we all collectively felt that we should hire her for the position. We also spoke after the interview on a potential wage, and that wage was set at 80,000. So we gave Ms. Lindsay a conditional offer of employment for the position and that wage contingent on the board approving that in the end. So that's how that was all handled. We all felt like she would be a good fit. We all felt that her knowledge and experience allows us for good stability going forward and also a good succession plan with everybody who's within that department. So we think it'll be a good fit and we're asking that the board approve hiring her and paying her at a starting salary of 80,000.
I make a motion that we hire, oh, wait a minute, sorry, Brianna Lindsay for the Deputy Assessor Position in compensation her at an annual wage of 80,000 dollars.
I'll second that.
Most mean and supported to hire Briann Lindsay as deputy assessor stated. Any discussion or questions about that? Ann, can we have a roll on that?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Al McManus.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right. That brings us to our next public comment. So we will open up public comment if anybody has anything they'd like to say.
Polly may want to make public comment.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Polly.
I've waited a long time for that.
All right. Well, I don't see our, you know, one public out here running forward, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. Any other business come before the board this evening?
There's one other piece of paper for Ridgeview Court Agreement to Fund Construction. Are we supposed to do that tonight?
That was on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay, I just didn't have a number, so, okay. Okay, that was it then.
Okay. Yes, Chris?
I don't know if the board has any interest in the, our engineer talking about the sewer project.
I'm just going to ask for the engineer, I wanted to ask, when are we going to ask her questions?
Yeah.
I've only lived it for five days. Five days.
There's some question that, do you call it a sinkhole or a stinkhole over there?
Literally, I know. You're not supposed to swear, but, you know, literally, I'm like, oh, we're at a SH double, you know, IT show. Literally. So to try to go through the recap, no, because I'm, I have invested a lot of time in this. And part of it, because obviously I'm your engineer, but we also have a new DPW director, and conveniently, the DPW superintendent was on vacation. Huh. So Thursday, it's brought to our attention, and Elmer's is always on call and has a really great relationship with Gordy Frazier, our inspectors, that there had been a sinkhole that developed through communication. They had heard from the road commission, this is Thursday. And so they immediately provided staff on site and started beginning investigation because they are the contractor on retainer through the DPW. They have a handful of them, and Elmer's, of course, having the resources. So they started excavating the site. CC Power was there because we have power poles right there in close proximity, and we also have, and that's just a big critical corner with not only utilities, but with the mast arms from the road commission. So the road commission definitely was at a heightened concern, and so traffic measures and safety protocol were put in place, and immediately TC overheard, everybody's talking about zipper merges and, you know, how to navigate and drive, because the right turn lane was taken out of commission because of this.
And the production didn't end in a straight one, and not only the right turn.
Right. So for context, for all of you who don't travel that route, and it's interesting, because I'm driving into town that morning, I'm like, huh, you know, because I saw CC Power there and I thought, oh, I don't, I wonder what they're doing, you know, that's Friday morning is when Elmer's actually started the work. And I, I guess I just didn't think too much of it, and then slowly, as I started talking to people, it kind of correlated and translated. Anyway, so from that, so context, if you're headed north, standing at the intersection, so it'd be the northeast quadrant there where the old TC Salad was, the gas station that they converted, if any of you had gone there before, and across from the Holiday Gas Station on that north side of the road. First, basically, they excavated the hole, exposed, and it was discovered it was a sanitary sewer, which is 12 feet deep. I'll probably say that a few times. And conveniently, one of our only few sanitary sewer that's constructed of clay, that's very brittle, so that's also convenient. And so Elmer's vac trucked down and tried to keep a very constrained, with some sheet piling, a hole so that we didn't continue to get into the road and maintain that integrity in traffic. Gordy Frazier inspectors were on site, I was on site at one point, Elmer's staff were on site and just, but prior to that, they do what they call an emergency mist dig request to give those utilities ability to come out on site, identify, flag their utilities, and those did, and we have those tickets and monitored that. Elmer's exposes the hole, and I have very good photos that I've shared with some of you guys, because we are continuing to keep track of this, because we don't know necessarily where it's going to go. But basically, it was very, very clear and present, there was utilities above ours, because ours was 12 feet deep. And at that corner is two manholes and about 41 and a half feet of sanitary sewer. So we were fortunate in that aspect, that it took up one of the radiuses there with sidewalk, and so we really were only compromising that right turn line. Underneath that, from the photos, you could see that there was a section of the clay sewer that had been broken out, and directly under that and going through our sanitary sewer line were two HDPE conduits. One was black and one was orange, right next to each other, that were four inch in diameter, just under 12 feet deep. So, you know, we recognized, our sewer was put in in 1978 era, and so of course, this utility, they weren't directionally drilling at that time, they weren't using HDPE during that era, so we knew it was, of course, a newer pipe and just kind of waiting to see what utility companies would come out and flag. Nobody identified themselves, and so Steve Folkesma, and I will commend him, he did a great job of communicating, is he just went through the list of contacts, because based on the coloring scheme and what we see, because it's industry standard that certain colors reflect certain utilities, and naturally, we presumed it to be fiber optic, because orange, whereas, you know, gas is going to be yellow, blue is water and so forth. So he started contacting every utility company locally that he had contacts with, sharing that data with me of who he's contacting. We're also contacting the schools to see what means of communication they were going through. So we, and I've been tracking all this as well with Mr. Folkesma, of keeping track of all the fiber optic companies. Well, nobody, and we even had AT&amp;T on site, Charter on site, just to further vet that out, because we, at a point where we couldn't do anything, and Chris had briefly spoke about this, our sewer is very rigid pipe and has a defined slope, so that it flows downhill. And with those fiber, or those conduits being right in going through our pipe, they had to be moved. And through this exercise, all day Thursday, we're just making phone calls. So Steve gave me his contacts of who he had called, I was following up, just confirming that as well. And then, as I'm speaking to some of these utility companies locally, they're then giving me other contacts, because I've now learned more about fiber optic than I would ever care to know, ever. But there's a lot of them that are aerial, they sublet to each other. There's, I was talking to companies in other states up in the UP, just to go through this vetting process, and then even talking to other contacts, because again, we weren't getting any information. I went through, because we do a lot of the mist digs for the DPW, so then I started thinking, maybe this pipe wasn't put in recently in the last year, maybe it was five years ago. But there is a considerable amount of sewer flow going through, because it's a 12-inch sanitary sewer that captures all of Cass, north and south Cass, so we're talking Britton, Sarah Lee, and ultimately, it heads north along South Airport Road. So at any given point where we're at peak flow, I mean, there could be about 200 GPM of flow. So let's assume maybe this has happened within the last 10 years, just to be generous. So we went through all of our mist digs, I worked with DPW staff, everything that did identify itself, we'd already flushed out with the mist dig companies that we could get ahold of, and they continued to say it wasn't theirs. And then all day, not all day, but portion of Friday, I called the road commission too, because trying to think of all the projects that have been done in that corner over the years. They had redone the mast arms, I talked to their electrical contractor, Jay Rank, I, Mr. Steve Berry, I sat with him on the phone going through all the permits that he had issued over the last 10 years, and then talked to other contacts I've had downstate of, you know, what do you do when you can't figure out this utility? There is, and I then reached out to the township, because through the Michigan MPSC, there's a commission, and through the Metro Act, the local agencies issue, or should be issuing permits for these utilities as well. And Laney, and then I also had spoke to Mike Green too, went and looked through records, and nothing had been released in the last 10 years, short of AT&amp;T, who I've already talked to. Then I also talked to broadband, Michigan Broadband Services, you know, so I could just go through the gamut of everybody. Ultimately, we're at a point where nobody has claimed this utility to date. DPW, I gave them a lead to contact a company called Bloodhound, who's a private utility locator. They were there this morning and were able to connect to it and hoping that they could track it down. And from there, they were there for probably about three hours, and of course, paying for their services to come up. From the best they could tell, it's dead. And so that's about as much as we've been able to do. I mean, at one point, you know, because this is an essential service, and Elmer's had suggested cutting into it, but weren't going to do it until they had authorization either from Garfield or DPW, and looking to me for that guidance, and it's, because Elmer's won't do it because of liability, and it puts us in the same predicament. I can't confidently advocate for you guys to do the same thing, because what if it is a gas line? What if it's, we don't know. But as it stands right now, we have vetted every avenue that I can possibly think of in talking to resources that I can think of that, yeah, it was not successful. So we have now issued a letter, which I shared a copy with Supervisor McManus and Manager Bar Chef, as far as authorizing them to now cut into that, those conduits, because we are an essential service, we're protected under the mist dig laws and acts to be able to have the means and methods to do that. But a big thing for us is, I mean, there's a lot of costs that we've spent, staff, labor. At one point, Elmer's was out there transfers, you know, we have to keep the sewer in service, and I want to make sure that we have someone that we can look to, to get reimbursed for those costs. So tomorrow will be interesting, once they cut it, that, you know, just sitting there seeing who runs out of their shop that doesn't have utility service, but also alarming, if it is abandoned, then whose was it? You know, I'm unsure. I mean, we have recourses through insurance, and then there's also through the MPSC, there's a process you can go through and file a claim and complaint, because they're supposed to be monitoring and utilities are supposed to be reporting to them under the state commission. But it's, you know, it's hard to say, and it's been, it's been frustrating, you know, for that, because, you know, most of us followed the proper procedures and, and maybe it was at some point part of the mist dig, and then through attrition where Spectrum changed the charter, or, you know, I'm just guessing that they abandoned it and just didn't report it to anyone. I don't know, but based on the sinkhole it created and those two conduits there, it's not something that existed 20 years ago. I mean, because I've worked for you guys for 20 years, and I've talked to other people that, do you remember a sinkhole being here 20, you know, at any, none of us remember any of that, and it would have been something with the flows would have presented itself a lot sooner, so it has to be something more recent that happened.
I do have a question. So tomorrow, you cut it, and then you start the repairs.
Correct.
How long is this going to take?
Well, our goal, we want to have it buttoned up tomorrow. Yeah.
So it'll be back open tomorrow?
Yeah, yep. So what we, and that's what I actually was texting, I sent the letter to Elmer's, trying to get an idea on their schedule, because basically, you know, at one point, I was thinking and talking to Supervisor, I said, oh, this is an opportunity for us to fix that pipe, not just repair it, but that's a lot bigger cost. And now recognizing this, I guess, trying to make, you know, lemonades out of a situation, that's something that we can add to your CIP, knowing this is an area susceptible that we'll want to replace it in the future. And there's other methods we can do, such as pipe bursting, that are trenchless and a lot more cost effective, so your CIP will change. But I, you know, I thought, okay, well, I mean, that's one thing that we can, I guess, be thankful for, is it was not an area that's ever been a problem, that I...